Row Bagley.
Here.
Harding is absent. Hug. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Here.
An affidavit of publication is on file and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good evening. Welcome to the Omaha City Council and to the hearing for the 2025 City of Omaha budget. Appreciate having you here tonight. We look forward to hearing your testimony. We'll have the city clerk review our procedures.
All right. Thank you. You must sign up to speak. Forms are available on the table outside of chambers or the city clerk's desk. Please submit completed forms to city clerk staff. The council president will call you to the podium. We ask that you speak for no more than three minutes. Please note that your comments must be on the budget or capital improvement program. Please submit written comments to the city clerk. They will be made part of the record. Council members welcome your calls and emails if you wish to discuss issues in greater detail. I will also note a copy of the finance director's budget presentation is available on the desk out front.
Thank you. As the city clerk noted, we aren't going to do the light system tonight. We're going to be rather informal, but we do ask that you try to keep your remarks limited to three or four minutes so that we can get everybody heard and everybody enough time to address the issues they want to address tonight. After this public hearing, the budget process will continue. Council members will consider your input and we can and will continue to review the recommended budget. We're scheduled to vote on the budget on Tuesday, September 10th at 2:00. Any amendments to the budget will also have public hearings that day. I'll ask that everyone's considerate of your fellow citizens tonight and their comments on the budget, whether you agree with them or not. We want to make sure everyone has a respectful experience here and then we have a chance to hear and consider your input. We'll now start with the first speakers tonight that have signed in and we'll do them in the order they have signed in. And so our first speaker is Doug Kagan. Please come to the podium.
Good evening. Doug Kagan, 416 South 130th Street, speaking for Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom. This budget presents many positive details for Omaha taxpayers. A property tax levy reduction, city revenue sources appear stable. There is solid spending on basic city services, for instance, police and fire services. City investments are excellent, as is obtaining grant funding. Our bond rating is superior. This administration has made notable strides in streamlining government, ranging from going paperless to investing in a mobile asphalt plant. However, it's important to remember that state tax and spending changes loom on the horizon. The legislature will mandate how local governments collect property taxes, restricting city revenue intake and spending. Understand that federal grant money to cities is decreasing, pandemic funds ending. Prepare to eliminate positions now funded by grants, but that in future would become a liability to the general fund. An astute mayor and city council would closely examine the budget for spending cuts and freezes. City government, we believe, must take preemptive measures to tighten its spending habits, restrict expenditures to only essential city services. This procedure would not only allow for a larger property tax decrease and added funds for infrastructure, but also allow for the reduction in or elimination of our city nuisance taxes like restaurant tax, phone tax, and tobacco tax. The restaurant tax already is bringing in more revenue than forecast. Require city employees to pay for a greater share of their benefit packages. Privatize several services. Require every city department to prioritize its spending, utilizing zero-based budgeting. Scrutinizing ways to trim personnel and non-personnel expenses. The mayor's office, we saw, would increase by 40% in the budget. Mayor Stothert, having asserted that the city is not overspending, should set an example by dismissing from her staff an unneeded D E and I czar, homeless coordinator, and outreach liaison. Finally, we want to commend Mr. Curtis and his finance department for assembling a very understandable budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kelly Crainer. It's Kelly here. Come on down, please.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Crainer. I'm with the Set Me Free Project. I'm the chief operating officer. Our mission is to stop human trafficking before it starts by providing prevention education to all ages. We began almost 10 years ago because there was a gap in services in counter-human trafficking in Nebraska. We filled that need and continue to fill that need. We do that by helping youth recognize their intrinsic value. And what sets us apart is we activate critical thinking skills in a bold, fun, and interactive way. We train school personnel so that they can deliver curricula regarding healthy relationships and social media safety to students from kindergarten through college age, with our human trafficking curriculum being introduced in middle school. We are currently in Omaha public schools. We also educate the community as a whole because prevention has to be a community response. Omaha is a hotspot, and yes, in the places we think about, but also in the places that we don't. What may surprise you is human trafficking is not like the movie Taken with white vans and kidnapping. Actually, by force, is less than 6% in human trafficking cases. What happens most frequently in the Midwest, and certainly right here in Omaha, is relationship building and familial trafficking. And we know that less than 2% of victims of trafficking are recovered and restored, which is why prevention is crucial. If we can prevent our youth, your kids, your grandkids, from being trafficked initially, we see a reduction financially in medical rescue and restorative needs. The homeless youth services coordinator for Department of Human Services from Minnesota stated, "We find that prevention of adolescent sex trading is the best interest of taxpayers. It results in a return on investment of approximately $34 for every dollar spent." We know the same is absolutely true for the city of Omaha. When you fund the Set Me Free Project, your dollars are going directly to prevent the trauma and pain from youth in Omaha and to stop trafficking before it starts. What if you could be part of the solution? Thank you for your time and consideration tonight.
Thank you, Kelly. And can you provide your address for the record, too? I forgot to ask you that up.
Yes, it's 3606 North 156th Street. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ken Kangier.
Good evening, Ken Kangier. 5107 South 37th Street, Christie Heights, Police, Athletics, and Community Engagement. I just wanted to come in front of the council and thank the mayor's office and the council for the support you showed the PACE organization several months ago, and also tell you how much I appreciate PACE organization being included in the 2025 budget. Since I came in front of you a few months back, we were able to put 100 or 1,200 kids onto the soccer field over the summer. Just under 300 kids were able to play baseball, which culminated in a Champions Day in both soccer and baseball this last Saturday, which was phenomenal with the weather and the facilities and the support. Several from the community and several from the council were able to show up and support those kids and community. And within a week or two of launching our flag football for the fall, we already have 200 or 200-plus kids. So on behalf of the kids, the families, our organization, I want to thank the chief, city council, and the mayor for the consideration of 2025 budget and what you're doing for community and youth engagement in the city of Omaha. Thank you.
Hopefully, the player they got head in the face that day is doing okay. Good. The next speaker is Luis Jimenez.
Luis Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. Are we doing opponents and proponents?
No, you're just addressing the city budget, whatever you'd like to say.
Good. So I know there's some good stuff on here, like support for firefighters and then investment in technologies throughout the various departments. So that's a plus. Two things that stand out to me is the community service programs. Line item, it has dropped to $2.7 million this year, and it was $6 million in 2023. It's community service programs. Lot of different opinions what community is, what that means. I think you need to be funding the line item by recuperating the $3 million that the Performing Arts Society was getting. Put it in other community services. The other thing is on planning. The planning department, I think that we need to have more inspectors, and the inspectors should reflect the community they're inspecting. So we need more Latinos, Black people being hired and recruited and hired by the planning department to be inspectors. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is John Collard.
Hello, John Collard, 17522 Madison Street. I'm representing Ideologics Insights. The questions about the budget and questions about, you know, what's going on with people's attitudes towards it and everything can be handled digitally today. And we've introduced a software called Poll the Vote that does that and allows constituents and elected officials to communicate with each other, just more than just beyond polling and newsletters and ways and text messages and things like that. We launched Ideologics Insights a year ago. Actually, ironically, today is our first day we're actually live with our software. And we are an Omaha-based data analytics company. With the software we've created is we created with input from like the Chamber of Commerce and state senators and what they would like to see in a piece of software like this. And I think that it could be something that could be used by a lot of people in different organizations around the city to help better communicate with our, with us and get opinions and issues resolved that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Trevor Towey.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm Trevor Towey. I'm the president, Omaha Professional Firefighters, Local 385 6005 Grover Street. I know I had to mark on their opponent or proponent. I'm really not either one. Quite honestly, when I look at the budget, I see a lot of good things in there. I see signs that are indicative of a growing city, a thriving city, a city that's, you know, pretty financially stable. But when I dig down into the department that affects my members, the fire department budget, that's where I have some concerns. And the concerns are that despite all that growth, despite our population increase, despite our call volume, there's, in this budget, $0 to increase staffing. There's $0 to put more firefighters on the streets, $0 to put more fire trucks able to respond to emergencies. And I was here earlier and I listened to the fire chief's presentation, and I appreciate her willingness and her desire to grow the department. I think that's a good thing. I appreciate her willingness to look outside the box, apply for grants that can help us with those funding efforts. And she did indicate that if we are not successful again in getting that grant, that we would evaluate the budget and see if we could put something in service. I respect that. But from my opinion, I think that analysis has already been done. And I think if you look at our call volume over the last 15 years and compare that to our staffing increases, the answer's pretty clear. It's hard for us to say and to accept that we'll evaluate it next year to see if we can put more firefighters and more fire trucks in service, because I know what the data is for the last 15. The data is, for the last 15 years, our call volumes increased 78%. If you just look at medic calls, it's an increase of 123%. Over that same time, we've increased staffing three. And in fact, 20 years ago, when I was a new firefighter, we had more staff, more firefighters than we do now. So that's already been tried. In 2022, the city's own information said that we were going to put Engine 2 back in service to address the additional call volume downtown that keeps growing. That didn't happen. It's not in there today, and it's not in this budget for 2025. And I know it's hard to see the effects from the public, but I can assure you, it is catching up with us. If you ask the firefighters that are working every day, they'll tell you they're seeing the effects of it now. It's not uncommon for fire crews to make 20 runs in a shift. That's just not sustainable, and it's not healthy, which brings me to my last concern. It's healthcare, healthcare screenings, to be exact. Last year, with the assistance of the city and a federal grant, and you guys approved it, I thank you very much for that, we were able to offer comprehensive healthcare screenings to every single firefighter on the job. That was a voluntary program, but 90% of our firefighters took advantage of the program. What that tells me is that our firefighters acknowledge the inherent risks that they deal with every single day protecting the citizens of Omaha, and they're taking a proactive response to their healthcare. This is a very valuable program that I know the fire chief said earlier today, and again, I respect her comments and I respect her work on this. She wants to be able to provide that, but the money's not there in the budget. She also indicated that the data wasn't there to put it in the budget. They draft these budgets, as you know, in February or March. The data wasn't there. I know that, but it is now. And the data, to me, is very clear that these comprehensive healthcare screenings make firefighters healthier, and in some cases, in a handful of cases, literally saved firefighters' lives this year. They were able to recover, get the treatment that they needed, and return back to work and help protect in Omaha's citizens. Bottom line is, I feel that we shouldn't rely on federal assistance to fund public safety and to fund firefighter health. So I'm asking that in this budget, we give consideration to putting those expenses and investing in our public safety, in our firefighter cells, in this budget. If we get a grant later on down the road that can supplement that, great, I welcome that. But I think this is important for us to do. If it's important for us, it should be important and be placed in the budget. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Alan Seibert. Okay, don't intend to speak. All right, no problem. Thank you. The next speaker is Gab Reima.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Gab Reima. I recently moved into councilmember Huggs District just a few weeks ago, but I've lived all over Omaha, and I had my address requirement waived for tonight's hearing. I have quite a few opinions about the proposed budget and the proposed CIP. One thing is that I'm really excited about the new proposed first draft of that climate action plan. I totally understand that it's not finalized, it's not finished. But I also know that we know some of the things that are going to have to happen regardless with that plan. And I would love to see more of that reflected in the CIP and in the budget. For example, we know that we're going to be asked to expand our bike infrastructure, our public transit, our pedestrian safety, expanding our urban canopy by planting street trees, and expanding our programs around recycling and waste management. One place I think we can start is with that bike infrastructure. The Harney Street Market to Midtown Protected Bike Lane is still the only protected bike lane in the city. I would love to see an expansion of that infrastructure by having connector routes that connect to that same protected bike lane that are also protected. One such route I see a great opportunity for would be 20th Street, especially between Leavenworth and Dodge, along that same 20th Street corridor. It would connect right to that bike lane, and it would also be a great place to help kids get to school safely. 20th Street Downtown is home to OPS's Liberty Elementary School, as well as the Omaha Children's Museum, the Downtown YMCA, the Omaha Children's Rose Theater, and Central High School. So that's like really our children's and families corridor downtown, and I think seeing a protected bike lane that connects to that Harney Street bike lane would be a great spot for that. Additionally, as I said, I would love to see projects like this prioritized, even if it's not this particular project, but expanding that safe bike infrastructure. I know I personally feel really nervous biking on the streets of Omaha outside of that protected bike lane, just because traffic can be so hectic to be a part of as a cyclist. So definitely working on expanding that bike infrastructure in other ways that we can move towards being less dependent on cars and single solo gas vehicle travel in general. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. The next speaker is Stephen Dickerson.
Good evening, Stephen Dickerson, 5214 Cass Street, District 1, Pete Festerson. I'm speaking today to oppose the proposed 2025 city budget on the basis of lack of climate action. Throughout the past few years, the city has drafted the Omaha Climate Action and Resilience Plan, which I, as a resident, have been afforded the responsibility to review. As a devoted advocate for our environment, I have loved the suggested actions that I've seen so far from the CARP, and I was also deeply concerned to read the budget. The budget did not mention the word climate once, and $0 was awarded to the CARP. Now, I'm aware that the CARP is still in the rough draft stage, and feedback is still being accepted until August 30th, but we have, we have an understanding of what we're going to need to do and what we have to put in place to be able to implement the climate action plan. And so that's why I question why there's nothing in the budget and why we choose to procrastinate. Climate action has to come quick. Projections from Pale Blue Dot, which the city hired to help with the CARP, showed that if we don't take action, we could spend 30% of our year with days that have a high temperature above 95 degrees, which is basically a death sentence, especially on high humidity days. So, yeah, I propose that instead of giving such a large increase to the Omaha Police Department, that we may be considered diverting some funds of that to propose the Phase 1 actions of the CARP's Strategy 1, which is quite basic strategies, things that we're going to have to do anyways. Strategy 1-1 establishes the CARP implementation team, which would get the ball rolling on funding estimates and collaboration between city offices and the mayor's office. Strategy 1-2 begins the funding of staff and the introduction of an accountability team. Strategy 1-3 continues plans for the implementation from within city departments. And Strategy 1-4 studies what changes would need to be made to city ordinances and policies so that the CARP can be successfully implemented. And then Strategy 1-5 relates more to staffing and community outreach. All of these actions would have to be done before we can start any real policy implementation of the CARP. So it's basically that, the structure, the foundation of it. And so I think that we're not doing enough by waiting when we could just do them now. And I know that it's not finalized yet or anything, but I think we should seriously consider starting those things when we have our futures at stake. I ask you to give serious consideration to this because climate action is just too important to completely ignore, especially when you have so many young people being told that, "Oh, are you planning to stay in Omaha, are you not?" And oftentimes, elected officials are always looking for ways to keep us here. And I think it's really important that you think about that this issue is so important to so many young people, that you have the opportunity to prove that Omaha is a city that we want to live in if you decide to do something like this. So I ask you to take bold action like that, and I understand it's not finalized again, but I think it should be something that you could consider. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Evelina Sane. Hopefully, I said that correctly?
Yes. Good evening, city council members. My name is Evelina Sane, and I reside at 109 South 51st Avenue. I am the executive director of Students for Sustainability, and I was appointed by the mayor to be a co-author on the Omaha City Climate Action Plan this year. So I aided in the development of that. I'm speaking today on behalf of my organization, Students for Sustainability, to acknowledge the preferential allocation of the 2025 city budget, which excludes mention of the Omaha Climate Action Plan and any of the associated initiatives. While the EPA has been pivotal in procuring advanced grants for our city, it is essential that sustainability is integrated into the city budget to ensure long-term perpetual development. This plan is not just a mechanism of appeasement. It is an ambitious, yet pragmatic, and wholly necessary framework that our city must adhere to to uphold our humanitarian obligation, promoting systematic change and global welfare through our leadership as the 39th largest city. This plan remains an ambiguous, superficial document full of fantastical commitments, if not supported by adequate funding. The construction and maintenance of resilient infrastructure, reliable waste management, and employment of financial instruments such as consumer incentives are examples of actions that will not only mitigate the impacts of climate change within our city, but increase public health, enhance livability, protect communities, and generate economic growth. According to an analysis by Pale Blue Dot, the organization heading the formulation of the Omaha cap, "On average, every $1 invested in climate action returns $4 in economic benefits." That is a 400% ROI. The International City Management Association, ICMA, further commentates on the cruciality of local planning. Quote, "Local governments must begin thinking at larger scales of impact and leverage their existing capabilities in areas where they have direct influence, such as municipal budgeting, land use planning, energy procurement, and infrastructure design. Successful deployment requires cooperation in city halls between sustainability, procurement, budget, and community development officers alongside private sector partners that can enhance financial design and construction capabilities." Pale Blue Dot has already drafted a comprehensive plan to accomplish the design component the ICMA refers to. Now, the liability falls upon our city officials to organize municipal budget allocation towards these initiatives, a long overdue action. In 2022, Lincoln substantially increased their CIP funding to urban development in union with the 2021 Lincoln Climate Action Plan. Cincinnati, Ohio, a city with a budget of just $4 million under ours, is home to the largest municipally established solar array in the country. The minimization of cost escalation in the contract allows for reliable budget prognostication, and savings at the end of the contract approach $2 million. The installation of over 300,000 solar panels at the farm creates a number of co-benefits, including clean renewable electrical power for all of the city's facilities, reduction of almost 160,000 metric tons of CO2, and creation of 160 union jobs, according to the ICMA. However, similar city expenditures expand beyond renewable energy. Pittsburgh's journey of vehicle electrification is a leading example of cross-department collaboration, policy development, and budget integration. In Bellingham, Washington, the city has dedicated millions to enhanced public transit services and waterfront cleanups. The recognition of environmental urgency is proliferating. It seems that segments of Nebraska are just late to the game. My desire to remain in Nebraska for my post-secondary education has been stifled by a combination of legislative reluctance and belated advancement in sustainable progression. I plan to pursue environmental law, a career field that will not prosper in a region where environmentalism is inherently politically opposed. It's not a polarized issue. It truly is a nonpartisan initiative that we all can come to work on, as it affects everyone. These impacts are ubiquitous. The brain drain within our state can arguably be attributed to a disregard for this type of adaptive policy. So on behalf of Students for Sustainability and the broader network of youth in our city, I urge you to include city, I urge you to include aspects of the Omaha Climate Action Plan in the 2025 city budget. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mark Brandon.
Is that going to work tonight?
Sorry?
Is that going to work tonight?
Uh, yes, I think it does.
Mark Brandon, 6915 Evans Street, 68104. This is, uh, this is from the budget, and just a couple of points I wanted to...
The button on top.
Thanks, Ms. Milton.
There you go.
Yep.
I know, it's tricky.
You getting there?
Yeah.
All right. One question I had, this is from the budget, and so you can see the budgeted position accounts for Fire, Police, and Public Works, and I'm aware of the fact that we are well below, as is publicized, the, the accounts for the police, but as is less publicized, I know as well that we are well below the budgeted accounts for Public Works, which I'm more concerned about. And I, I just, at some point, I'd like that number to be publicized. What, what is the number that we're at? Because we know the number that we're budgeted at, and we all know that the problems we're facing with our Public Works Department, despite the fact that every staff member, top to bottom, works as hard as they can. So that's not their problem, it's a budget problem, where we need to, if we have it budgeted, it should be budgeted. And so everybody, I think, around the city who has trees out in front of their house right now feels that pain, and so I need to know the discrepancy between what the budgeted number for this year is and where we stand. And I think the citizens demand to know that. This, oh, sorry, something I wrote down. Somebody mentioned, somebody reminded me of the rental registry, so discussing the Planning Department. I did a cursory study of my neighborhood, I live in the Benson neighborhood, and what I found was that less than 50% of the rental properties are registered currently within the city of Omaha. How do I know that? It's pretty simple. You can go through DOGIS, you can, you can find out which LLCs own which, you can, you can go around, it's, it's very simple, and I don't know why the Planning Department, after, years after the rental registry was passed to protect the least vulnerable citizens of our city, they have not figured out how to shore up that difference. Because I will also tell you, you know, walking my kids and my dog around the neighborhood, I will tell you, if you match up the ones that are not registered, they also, coincidentally, happen to be the ones that appear to be the, you know, the most danger to, to the residents living there. So, something needs to be done about that. Something that sparked a few weeks ago, Mr. Festerson made a brilliant point. He asked Mr. Curtis where we were at with our bonded indebtedness, and if we had any room in the budget, and if you can see here, down here, the total amount of general obligation indebtedness outstanding at any time, which shall include bonds issued but not, shall not include bonds authorized until they are issued, shall not exceed 3.5% of the total actual value of taxable real and personal property in the city. So that's our limit, and of course, we don't want to come anywhere near that limit, that would be fiscally irresponsible. If you look here, I'm very proud, and somehow throughout the years, we have brought that percentage down. Mr. Curtis, congratulations, you've done an excellent job. 1.17% is the, is the lowest percentage, so as Mr. Festerson pointed out, we do have a little bit of wiggle room if we wanted to incur more bonds. Sure, I don't like debt, nobody likes debt, but if it's something that's a pressing problem within the city, perhaps those bonds are necessary. What's the most pressing issue within our city? Affordable housing. And so those community housing bonds that you mentioned, I researched, it's a brilliant idea, and I don't know why we're not going after that. We have, we have the capabilities, even though I don't, this, even though this is the lowest here, I don't somehow know the math, per capita, maybe we need to get more people, we're not growing as, as well as we should have, but per capita, it's the highest in that range, which somehow Mr. Curtis is excellent at math to make that work out. One thing I also wanted to mention on that, on that matter is, that I was a little concerned about is, as far as, is it magic math, or do I not understand it, but on the bottom here, revenue, bond indebtedness, general obligation notes, and lease purchase bond agreements are not chargeable against the general obligation debt margin. So of course, any lease purchase bonds don't count towards this percentage. And I think we all know that, or people in this room know that, a lot of the purchases recently and purchases coming up are going to be charged to lease purchase bonds, the $52 million in, for the parking garages, the, yes, we, yes, so we're all aware of that, and so I just want to make sure that we're not, because if you do look at the, the percentage of the, of the, of the appropriations, the debt is right, for, for, you know, for the past few years, it has risen, we're up to like, what is it, 30, 30-some percent? So that, I'd like to know more about lease purchase bonds and the risk of those long Finally, I do appreciate the work of everyone on the City Council, especially in the City Clerk's Office, but I think there's a misconception around Omaha, within the media and within, you know, among, amongst fellow citizens, that this is not a full-time position. You know, we all know that the legislature only makes $12,000 and some change plus per diem, but the fact of the matter is, is that everybody on this council makes more than the per capita of this city. And so, you know, you guys always say you're not representing the people in your district. Of course, the per capita of Ms. Milton's district and Mr. Harding, who's out here, their district is, is higher, of course, so to keep up that style of living, you would need a, a higher household income. But across the board, across the city, you all, from the city of Omaha, collect more every two weeks than the average, than the median citizen, okay? You can see that, you know, Mr. Festerson makes $53,000 and change, the rest of you make about $51,000, and so these people over here in the Clerk's Office, that work just as hard as you, come here 40 hours a week, make about the same amount as you, but every single one of you works a position outside of this council, whether it be from Builder Supply, Mr. Harding being a, being a developer, working at OPPD, UP, being a, being a lawyer, being VP of CHI Health, you're, you're entrepreneur, Mr. Hogg, I forget what else is you. But the point of, the point is, the citizens deserve better, because not only do you receive that wage, this is right here, you guys also receive benefits, right? Full-time benefits of the city of Omaha, and so there was a conception that, you know, with, with, with the code of conduct, that maybe you guys are different from other city employees, but you guys receive the same pension, the same insurance, and all the like. And so I think the citizens deserve to know that, and I'm not blaming you, because that's just the way it's been, but I, I believe things need to change. Appreciate your time tonight.
The next speaker is Marissa Viasio.
It's Viasio, thanks. So my name is Marissa Viasio, with 6001 Dodge Street, here representing Elevate Omaha. It's really, okay. So I'm here on behalf of Elevate Omaha to oppose the proposed 2025 budget. Elevate Omaha is a nonprofit organization that envisions a world in which young people and others impacted by systemic societal issues lead work to change those systems. We do this by equipping young people to become leaders and creating opportunities to advocate for themselves and their peers through advocacy, research, technical assistance, and grant making. At Elevate, we recognize the importance of getting the community involved early and ensuring that their voices are heard various times within processes versus giving them only one opportunity to provide feedback. So when we began to do research on the city of Omaha budget, we were sad to see that information was only given to community members a few weeks before the hearing, and there were no opportunities for them to be a part of the initial drafting of the budget. We believe that the city of Omaha can learn from other cities such as Chicago and Minneapolis, who are good examples of what public participation should look like for a budget process. Chicago, for example, has an accessible website that makes it easy for community members to give feedback online. Minneapolis takes it a step further by consulting with a group of young, a group of young people on what should be on the budget. Elevate Omaha also wants to bring to light the message that the city is sending with the current priority areas that are shown in the budget. When doing our own internal research, we found that when youth was men, youth was mentioned 10 times in the budget, it pertained to youth programs that contradicted with, within themselves. For instance, we, we are funding a youth violence prevention program to pay police officers overtime to surveillance communities at night, yet we are funding more parks and recreational areas for, for youth to hang out in, to hang out in, but we're limiting their access past a certain time. We feel as though the city is not authentically connecting with young people to understand what they want to see happen in their neighborhoods. It's time that we see a change. I ask that the City Council to vote no today and begin to co-create a youth-driven solution, starting with developing a process for youth to be involved in the broad, in the budget creation. We're happy to work with the city to continue to engage young people in initiatives that will impact them directly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Either of these mics work?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Good evening, councilors. My name is Johnny Redd, and I have waived the requirement to state my address, although I live in District 3, and I'm a constituent of Councilman Begley. My mouth is really dry tonight, so I'll try not to make popping noises into the mic. I am a co-founder of the Grassroots Civic Engagement Project, Strongly Worded Letters, Omaha, as well. I'm testifying tonight in opposition to this proposed budget for 2025. I'm not a budget expert or an accountant, just a regular citizen with concerns and ideas, so bear with me as I do my best to discuss my ideas. First, I ask that the city allocate funding to an initiative to increase visibility and engagement on the budget process itself. Year after year, with help from peers in this very room, I've had to do my best to dig through a 500-page document and understand the charts and appendices. My, you know, art school degree did not prepare me for that. I'll also note that the beginning of the budget document states, "Cooperation, teamwork, and responsiveness as shared goals for the budget. I'd push you to make more concrete steps towards those goals. I do my best as a community advocate to educate peer-to-peer, but a robust town hall event or digital engagement campaign could do wonders for the participation barriers that we see here. Often, it feels as if our input is not wanted." Second, I'd like to state that I appreciate and believe in many of the community programs currently funded through the city, especially the ones geared toward youth, but I would be remiss if I didn't also state that no program is more impactful on a child's positive outcome than having a safe and stable housing situation. I have heard from city employees and formerly homeless friends alike that housing and homeless services are not being funded adequately. I will note that in the budget, I observe that this is being funded through various nonprofits and grants, but I would ask you to commit yourselves to more, as homeless people and housing insecure people are part of our community and deserve these resources. Next, we all want fun things to do in our city, like attending sporting events, but I find it difficult to stomach $2 million a year for a stadium, when overburdened nonprofits and shelter services are being asked to make do with limited beds and supplies. I also would like to point out that almost half of our general fund is dedicated to the Omaha Police Department, and no other department besides Fire even comes close to that large of a slice of the pie. I believe our budget should be more representational of the community it is funding. When I look at our city and at my friends and family, I see social workers, nurses, baristas, teachers, bus drivers, librarians, and more. The current slices of the pie need to reflect the priorities of all Omaha residents, not just the ones in charge, and those who often contribute to the erosion of trust we have in our government. I ask that you commit more funds to Mentor Nebraska, Homeless Day Services, Healthy Housing, Community Alliance, Omaha for Us, Collective for Youth, and the North Omaha Neighborhood Alliance, as well as tenant rental assistance and emergency shelters. I also commend Council President Festerson for introducing amendments in the past supportive of the Harney Street bike lane, and I ask that we secure permanent funding for it in the CIP, as well as more infrastructure to connect the bikeway to other parts of the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Margot Juarez.
Good evening, everyone. Margot Juarez, 5170 O'Hearn Street, 68117, and I am in Councilman Huggs District. So I wanted to be a little transparent tonight about my comments. First of all, I am a city of employee, city of Omaha employee, in the Parks Department, and I'm going to be complaining about the Parks Department, but obviously, these are my personal opinions, my complaints. Also, because I've been going around canvassing for my legislative position, I've gotten feedback from people that I canvass with in my area, and I told them that I would come and speak on their behalf tonight. So first of all, in regards to the Parks Department, I took a look at the details here, and I've been here before to complain about my park that has been ignored by the city in the budget, and my park in my neighborhood is Red Munley Park, and I don't see my park mentioned here in the last paragraph as far as a focus for the funds. I spoke with Katie Swanson back in February of 2022. So this is August 2024, and I'm still at nothing. I don't know who makes these discussions about what parks are going to be focused on for the funds, but obviously, my park is never mentioned continuously. So again, I am complaining about the lack of attention to my park. I've even had a meeting with her, with my neighbors, and again, I'm coming before you and complaining and bringing my park to the forefront that we want improvements in my park, too. Now, in regards to the feedback that I received from residents in the district, of course, about the roads, and I had already mentioned this to Mr. Hugg, that someone complained because they don't like the rocks on their street, they wish that their street would get paved, and they mentioned, of course, that the property taxes are going up, so why can't they have a paved road instead of a road with rocks on it? It makes sense to me, I don't know why we can't start to gradually try to get these streets paved. I'm sure the homeowners would, would appreciate that. I also got a comment from someone in the district about wanting to make our area of town, which is part of South Omaha, more walkable, and he felt that that would definitely be an enhancement to the neighborhood, and I know that if we had sidewalks, that that maybe would also help with having better bus service if we had more sidewalks in the area. So I just wanted to make those comments on behalf of the residents in my district and make my personal comments about my park on behalf of my neighborhood association, which is Buena Vista Neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Teddy Morrison.
Hi, Teddy Morrison, 3524 Hawthorne Avenue. I'm in Ms. Johnson's district. First, I recognize that you didn't write this budget, but I do want to acknowledge that it, it opens with calling a word in another language, Indian legend, which just isn't true. It's, Omaha comes from the Omaha Ponkin language, and though the translation is correct, it's actually a translation and not some vague legend from make-believe people. These are real people who speak this language and live in the city. So, moving on from that, I also want to acknowledge what somebody said earlier about insufficient fire staffing, particularly for their medics and their EMTs. A 3% increase in staff coupled with 123% increase in call volume is just un- A 3% increase in staff coupled with 123% increase in call volume is just unacceptable. They're doing 23 calls a shift. And I don't know about you, but I don't want the paramedic who comes to my house when I have an accident to be tired. I want them to be ready to give me the care that I need, the care that my family and my neighbors deserve. Then I wanted finally to speak to the disproportionate police budget. I recognize that the budget is a reflection of our values, a reflection of what we want from our city. And 40% of our budget means that we want reduction in crime. The evidence shows that police spending has no consistent correlation with crime. There was a meta, a meta-study out of Toronto from the Canadian Public Policy Institute that showed that. What does prevent crime is investing in high-quality preschools. That leads to a 70% reduction in arrest rates later in life. It adds 29% to the number of high school graduates out of those preschoolers. Investing in green spaces reduces property crimes by 48%, reduces violent crimes by 56%. And finally, investing in housing. Establishing a local housing trust fund would be invaluable. Most crimes are crimes of desperation, crimes of people who don't have enough and who are just trying to get by. When people are safe, when they have someplace to live, when they have some security in what will happen to them, they are significantly more likely to invest in their communities and themselves and less likely to engage in behavior that, that harms others. So funding a local housing trust fund, a non-congregate shelter, bringing that back. I don't know if you remember, but during the, during the pandemic lockdowns, we started a non-congregate homeless shelter. And these were just rented hotel rooms where people could come and be safe. People who were elderly, people who were immunocompromised, and people who had children. And overwhelmingly, these people got stable housing and they got jobs afterwards. They'd arrive, they'd go to their rooms, you wouldn't see them for two days. And when they came out finally to get some food, they were completely different people. Just having that peace of mind, knowing that you're going to be okay, makes a world of difference for what people are able to accomplish. So investing in our green spaces, in our schools, in our housing would do a lot more than continuing to invest in police, I think. And if we want to reduce crime, then those are evidence ways to do that. I also, I know this really isn't the purview here, but I have concerns about the property tax bill that's going through our legislature right now and what that means for particularly school budgets. If 95% of the state funding for schools is slashed, then there's, it has to come from somewhere. We can't operate schools on a 5% budget. So I just want to make sure that there's kind of a plan for that going forward. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Peyton Zyla. Thank you for the phonetic spelling there for xylophone, that helped.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Peyton Zyla, and I'm here today to represent Clarice Dombek's campaign for Regional Metropolitan Transit Authority. I reside at 4362 Sewer Street in District Two. I am here today as an opponent of the proposed 2025 city budget. We oppose this budget because it fails to adequately fund the critical initiatives necessary to meet the goals outlined in Omaha's Climate Action and Resilience Plan and Vision Zero commitment. These are not just lofty ambitions. They are essential frameworks for ensuring that Omaha remains a vibrant, sustainable, and safe city for all of its residents. Firstly, the Omaha Climate Action and Resilience Plan sets a goal to increase public transit ridership from 1.3% to 5% by 2035. However, the proposed budget does not reflect a serious commitment to this target. Public transit is the backbone of a sustainable and equitable city, and without sufficient investment, we cannot achieve this necessary, the necessary improvements in reliability, frequency, and safety that will make metro a viable option and a viable and attractive option for more Omaha residents. The current state of our transit system is a significant barrier to increasing ridership. Without dedicated funds for improving and expanding metro services, we will fail to make the necessary enhancements to encourage residents to choose public transit over personal vehicles. Investing, investing in metro means that ensuring that, investing in metro means ensuring that existing routes are more efficient and reliable, reducing wait times and improving service frequency. Additionally, we must create new routes and extend current ones to underserved areas of our city, making public transit a practical and convenient option for more people. A robust public transit system is not just an environmental or economic concern, it is a matter of social equity. Many of our residents, particularly those in marginalized communities, rely on public transit for their daily needs, whether it's commuting to work, attending school, or accessing essential services. By underfunding metro, we are perpetuating a system of inequity that limits opportunities for these individuals and exacerbates social and economic disparities in our city. Moreover, the current budget does not adequately, adequately address our Vision Zero commitment to eliminate traffic fatalities and serious injuries. The lack of investment in pedestrian and cyclist infrastructure is a glaring oversight. If we are serious about Vision Zero, we must commit more funds to projects that ensure our streets are safe for all users, not just drivers. This includes building more protected bike lanes, crucial for cyclist safety, and improving pedestrian crossings with better lighting, pedestrian-activated signals, and clearly marked crosswalks. The urgency of these investments is underscored by the alarming disparities in traffic-related fatalities in Omaha. Black and Native American residents, who together make, only make up 13% of the city's population, account for a disproportionate 25% share of traffic-related fatalities. These statistics show, showcase a critical need for better quality infrastructure in underserved parts of Omaha, where safer streets are not just a matter of convenience, but of life and death. Without the necessary funding, we will fail not only our Vision Zero goals, but also our most vulnerable residents. We would like to see funds reallocated to metro and pedestrian and cyclist infrastructure because these investments are essential for achieving the goals set forth in the Omaha Climate Action and Resilience Plan and Vision Zero. Public transit improvements will not only help reduce our city's greenhouse gas emissions by decreasing vehicles' miles traveled, but will also provide economic savings to our residents. In addition to environmental and economic benefits, improving public transit and active transportation options will enhance the quality of life for all Omaha residents. It will reduce traffic congestion, improve air quality, and promote healthier lifestyles by encouraging walking and cycling. Most importantly, it will create a more inclusive city where everyone has safe, has access to safe, affordable, and reliable transportation. In closing, we urge the city council to reconsider the proposed 2025 budget and commit to increasing funding to support Omaha's, and commit to increasing the funding necessary to support Omaha's Climate Action and Resilience Plan and Vision Zero goals. By investing in metro and pedestrian and cyclist infrastructure, we can build a city that is not only more sustainable and equitable, but also safer and more livable for all, for all of its residents. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker is Clarice Dombek.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Clarice Dombek, and I reside at 901 Farnum Street. I'm here today representing the Redress Movement. We are a nonprofit organization dedicating to redressing racial segregation in countries, in cities throughout the United States and here in Omaha. So in 2022, the City of Omaha put forth its Housing Action and Affordability Plan, which has the goal of developing 18,000 affordable housing units by 2030. Since then, there has only been 300 affordable housing units developed in the city. And in order to reach that goal of 18,000 affordable housing units, funds need to be redirected to the City of Omaha Development and Preservation Fund. During COVID, we saw the, we saw $20 million poured into the City of Omaha Development and Preservation Fund. Now, without those COVID funds, I guess the question that I have is, how does the City of Omaha plan on reaching that lofty goal of 18,000 affordable housing units by the year 2030 without adequately funding that fund? Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Skylar Sotoff.
My name is Skylar Sotoff. Address 16907 Oakmont Drive, Apartment Four, Omaha, Nebraska, 68136, District 49. I'm speaking today to oppose the budget because I have worked for almost five years in spaces with underserved communities, almost a year with the homeless population, and almost four years with the incarcerated population. I have seen kids as young as 14 locked up, and I've walked through Tecumseh's death row. And I now work to house these individuals, to find employment for these individuals, to find resources for these individuals. As I look at this pie graph for the Omaha's plan, I do not think this measly 0.3% is enough to address the human rights issues these individuals face. And I would implore and encourage the City of Omaha to consider funding more of our nonprofits and to consider more initiatives for human rights for these populations. Thanks.
Thank you. The next speaker is Deshaun Cunningham.
Deshaun Cunningham, 538 Golden Avenue, Long Beach, California, and 225 North 12th, Omaha, Nebraska. I've been a long-term critic of the police budget we typically pass every year. And that's not based on outside observations. Most of you on that side of the podium know me and my work. For the people that are listening that are unaware, I've spent the last 10 years being an advocate for police reform, police oversight, whatever you want to call it. I actually have had numerous meetings still to this day with Chief Schmodder, going back 11 years, about how policing should operate. And definitely at this point in time, the perception of policing has changed. And I know I have personally had a hand in that. The first time Schmodder and I ever met, flat-out made threat stand. That's how far we've come in our personal working relationship, to be able to properly critique the police department from an outside perspective, but while also offering workable solutions. 11 years ago, when we first met, one of our main goals was homicide clearance rates. They were abysmal, at 36%. The national average at the time was around 60. I believe it's around 58% at this point. 2023, last year, Omaha, for the first time, had 100% homicide clearance rate. So that's based on a lot of work from the department itself, but a lot of people in the communities as well. You can't simply expect to overfund the department. And as someone said earlier, spending doesn't correlate with results. And in fact, this has been one of Stothard's long-term pledges. Every year, she campaigns more policing. She talks about having that gold standard number of policing, around 1,000 officers for a city our size. Right now, the last I knew it was around 800. So it looks like it's gone down below 800 officers that we have. So in that same time, when we've been losing officers, we've actually increased efficiency in the department, particularly when it comes to homicide clearance. With department measures and community measures in place, we've both effectively reduced gun crime by 50% in this city. So it begs the question, I often feel policing has made a political hot potato on both sides, but we need to have a rational thought process on this of what works and what doesn't work. So if we're able to still provide adequate service with around 800 officers when we're told that we're lacking, we really need to look at that budget and evaluate. Do the numbers add up? Most of us run businesses. We wouldn't overspend on something that didn't make sense when we have increased efficiency with lower numbers. I think we can all understand that, and that should be applied to the methodology of OPD with the budget as well. Another thing I would have, you know, a critique on is, you know, Stothard had said in a recent interview, "We can't expect the crime trends to continue down." Omaha is actually a smashing success story. As many of you know, we've had people coming in positions similar to yourselves, mayors, council members, nonprofit heads, to come and study how Omaha has made these advances where other cities are struggling. So we are actually ahead of the curve. So one thing that I think we can even get further ahead on, a practical thing in the budget, 50 new police cruisers. From my meetings with Schmodder, one of the things we've talked extensively about is increasing the mental health officers that operate in the UPB and go out on the streets and respond to calls. So last, last I knew, it costs about $150,000 a year to have one of those officers on the department. So if we're talking about adding or spending 2.2 million on new cruisers, that could essentially get 15 new mental health officers on the street, which I think would be a much bigger benefit for the people of Omaha. I kind of wanted, you know, double back to one thing I kind of skipped around. When the mayor talked about not expecting the crime trends to continue, as other people have mentioned earlier, just the way things are worded sometimes, that could be read as disparaging the community's work over the last 10 years. You don't get those results by only relying on the police department. So that's all I have to say about that. To transition to a few other things. People have talked about the, is it Mission Zero or Vision Zero with the traffic incidents? I actually witnessed a fatal car versus person accident last year on 33rd and Dodge. It's not something you want to see. And we're at the point now where we lose more people due to car accidents than we do to homicides. I think part of that is Omaha is at a point where a lot of us have been working to make this a more urban area, to break away from those kind of Nebraska images that hold us back. So some of that increasing traffic or increasing pedestrian and traffic deaths is due to we have more people not using cars as modes of transportation. But things I've witnessed, living downtown for the past two years, we have horrible signage, we have people crossing. I see, I see people leave the intersection to cross further down the street with traffic. So just the way we have a lot of our road systems designed are not currently, even if we add bike lanes, they're not addressing the pedestrian element in terms of safety, in terms of traffic flow. I live at the Capital District, that's, there's a lot of events in that area. I regularly see people running through the traffic. Simple things like decorative fencing could go a long way to prevent those car versus pedestrian incidents that we're far too familiar with. But things like that do circle back to what everyone is saying, that we spend too much in certain areas when we can show with the numbers that we don't necessarily need to do that spending. So I would encourage you all to re-review this budget based on the input you received tonight and move forward accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. I have two more speakers registered. I just want to make sure anyone who might be here and still wants to speak. If you intend to do that tonight, just make sure you sign in and fill out a form. Otherwise, we'll go to our next speaker, which is Dwayne Lamont Hayes.
It's Dewan Lamont Hayes. 4362 Sewer Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Dewan Lamont Hayes. I would like to use the overhead. My name is Dewan Lamont Hayes, and I'm here to oppose the current budget as it stands. Budgets are moral documents. They indicate points of importance where time, attention, and resources will be directed. This budget sees the largest amount of energy given to the police department, as we all know and have heard. It is often said that is to ensure public safety. Safety is a complex and nuanced experience. It is not static or uniform, and it is primarily comprised of the foundations of people's basic needs, including food, shelter, water, health, education, communication, and connection. How much infrastructure of support does this budget truly prioritize? Because the police does not provide these resources. We have the opportunity to listen to the needs of our community and prioritize those needs. I was at Elmwood Park yesterday, one of my, one of our oldest parks in a rather affluent and regularly-used area. And this is the status of one of the benches there. Broken with metal leg posts exposed, "This is unsafe," right next to the playground. Is the police department going to replace this bench? No. I believe that's the responsibility of our Parks Department, who is seeing a modest increase in budget support. And I also checked the CIP and did not see Elmwood Park in it. This is just one of several parks that were named throughout this budget hearing today and throughout the city. My friend also needed to use the restroom, but there was only a porta potty available. Our parks ought to have public restrooms. One might bring up that houseless, the houses' population using and abusing them. Then we should hire park attendants to monitor and care for our public spaces and put resources into housing people instead of displacing them. We just saw one of the largest power outages in our city's history. Our power infrastructure is old and vulnerable. Where in the budget is the money for weatherization and energy distribution? Where are we working with OPBD on battery storage and renewable energy generation? We lost thousands of trees that are all now being turned to mulch. The canopy of our city has significantly diminished, which will increase the surface heat temperature and reduce air quality. Where in the budget are new trees and plants to replenish our ecosystem? Here, I've pointed out many needs, amongst, just a handful amongst many. And presently, we only have one opportunity to express our needs, wants, and desires. Why not plan for a participatory budgeting process that engages citizens in the process before now? There is little to no communication from City Hall about the budget or any other business. Most of it is conducted on Facebook. And if one were to check the comments and actually read what citizens are saying, they aren't asking for a streetcar or a new arena. They're asking for their basic needs and experience of the city to be improved and met. City planning recently begun work around updating our comprehensive plan, which has not been updated in over 30 years, and it sure looks and acts like it. It's called "We, We Make Omaha." We, us, we make Omaha. We pay for Omaha. We are Omaha. So listen to and prioritize our needs now. We have a Climate Action and Resilience Plan. We have an active mobility plan that identifies corridors and areas that need pedestrian and bike infrastructure. We're working on our comprehensive plan. We're doing all the lip service to gather the feedback. Now it's time that our budget truly prioritize, put time, energy, and resources in enacting and uplifting those plans. Thank you. Those concludes my statements.
Thank you. The last speaker I have tonight is Luke Schrour.
Do I need to state my address since it's on the paper? Okay, Luke Schrour, 415 Leavenworth Street, Apartment 366. And I do apologize, this might be a little bit of a hot mess because I was racing to get over here, so, but I'll do my best here. I've noticed that the two largest appropriations on the budget is Public Works and Police. And I know we've talked a lot in city council. I've tried to teach you guys along the way about suburban sprawl and the dangers for a city budget that that poses. Cities actually treat infrastructure as a depreciating asset instead of what it really is, which is an infinitely recurring future liability, specifically roads and things like that. You build a road, it is not an asset. You cannot sell it, you cannot pick it up and move it, you cannot give it to another community, and you cannot write it off, you can't get a write-off for it. You have created, when you build a road, is an infinitely recurring future liability. 25 years from now, you have to fix that road. 25 years after that, you're going to have to fix it again, and so on and so on. You're going to have to plow the snow off of it, mow the ditches, seal the cracks, fix the potholes. As soon as you have an asset that depreciates, oops. As soon as you build a road, it becomes a liability with balance sheets. Woo, okay. I'm just going to skip, you kind of get the idea. You have, you're on the hook for an infinite amount of maintenance. And that is showing up in the budget. As you can see, more and more each year, we are attributing more to Public Works. The concept, there's a concept called Eyes on the Street. This has been shown to reduce crime. Having people enjoying food on a cafe along a street, for example, can reduce bad behavior, which should help reduce 911 calls impacting first responder budgets. Car dependency separates people from first responders and drives up gas, wear and tear on vehicles, and increases traffic, which can also increase further chances of accidents. So when we do this suburban sprawl, we are separating people. We are taking eyes off the street because you're not having those interactions. A lot of people would rather enjoy their backyard than their front yard. I'm not going to speak for everybody, but the more you take eyes off of the street, the more shady activity can go on. And that's a concept you can look up if you so choose. It's called Eyes on the Street. Good resources on this would be looking up Strong Towns on YouTube or Not Just Bikes. Those are really good resources. They kind of break things down way better than my mumbling up here. So property taxes have to increase to cover the terrible development patterns that we have been approving for over half a century. We kind of started doing car dependency after the Second World War, and it's a growth Ponzi scheme. We're just chasing our tails with trying to get more new developments to cover costs of aging infrastructure on other developments. Potholes are getting worse every year, and you see it all over Facebook because we have added an ungodly amount of street square footage, stretching crews thinner and thinner. You'll see a theme here. Changing lanes a little bit, yesterday I saw a father push their child in a stroller onto the street because the sidewalk was blocked with cars parking one wheel up on the sidewalk. Why are cars doing that? It's because our roads are so wide and flat and catering to moving cars fast that they're getting hit. So what do they do? They encroach on the sidewalk. And I watched a father push the car to go around the cars on the street side, which is just mind-blowing. Like, the pedestrians belong on the street, but we keep doing wide, flat roads all over town, catering mainly to car drivers. And we've really got to stop doing that if we want to drive down 911 calls. I noticed, so I keep saying that it's a drain on a city budget. And like, you don't have to take my word for that. I'm just a citizen saying that to you. But I did notice, a few weeks ago, I was going to come speak on an item, not realizing that public input had passed. But I noticed in there that it gave a 10-year projected financial report, which absolutely would show a positive. In this case, it was 14.4 million. But that, that undercuts that 15, 20, 50-year projection that I'm trying to convey to you. So you guys are getting numbers that are saying that suburban sprawl is a financial benefit, but a 10-year mark does not account for roads and sewers and all the updating and the constant maintenance that crops up, snow plowing, things like that nature. In conclusion here, I noticed that last year's Public Works budget was just shy of $700 million. And the estimated increase is a quarter billion. Is that, I hope my numbers are right. I hope I'm understanding that correctly. But that's, that's what I'm trying to show you when I come and speak. And I know I ramble. I'm not a public speaker, but.
You're doing all right.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to convey really difficult ideas in a not-so-great forum. I probably could use better avenues for that. But that being said, if we had the Public Works working on like, street trees and beautification projects and benches and our Parks Department, if we could allocate those resources to better uses instead of spreading out our community and driving walls between us and, and like, physical space between us, we're losing our sense of community. We are increasing our budgets. And I would like to see more effort put forward to our action, our Climate Action Resilience and our Vision Zero. And I think that goes hand in hand with smarter zoning and approving of developments. So rambling over, thank you. I do oppose it as it's currently written for reference everything I said before, so, thank you.
Thank you. That was our last speaker. I do want to thank everyone for coming tonight and participating and offering your thoughts and comments to us. As I mentioned.
You must know that under the open meetings law, if I do not stand up now and file a complaint to you publicly.
Larry, you're out of order. We appreciate you all being here and offering your comments. As I referenced, we will have any amendments the council may propose. We'll be, have public hearings themselves on September 10th. So thank you all for being here. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Roll call.
Melton. Roe. Bagley. Hug. Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed 6 to 0. Meeting is adjourned at 7:51.
Thank you.